First of all, this is a public hearing. Each case, there will be one, and applicants are asked to keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as rebuttal. So just if you go eight minutes, and then you can save two after all the people in the public hearing have spoken. After public hearing is closed, that, the rest will be the commissioners talking. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes each unless they're representing an organization or a group, and that group may have five minutes. And Sean Alexander will be the timekeeper for that. Appeals to the decisions of today pursuant to the provision of Section 2.680.30 of Metropolitan Cota laws. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of cert. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of search to the specific decision over the Historic Zoning Commission. Any council people here today? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? Okay. First is, we don't have any overlay. Okay, consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual pub hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And I think we are, you know, 429 Broadway, whoops, is removed? And is this 2216 as well?
Yes, sir, 2216 Belmont.
Yeah. Okay.
Good afternoon. This month's consent agenda includes 1101 Sixth Avenue North, new construction of an addition; 2007 Eastland Avenue detached accessory dwelling unit with setback determination; 429 Broadway has been moved to new business; 3603 Meadowbrook Avenue, new construction of an addition and partial demolition; 322 Harvard Avenue, new construction of an addition; 1406 Fifth Avenue North, new construction of an addition and outbuilding and setback determination; 1900 Fatherland Street, new construction of an outbuilding with setback determination; 2216 Belmont has been moved to new business; and 2206 Eighteenth Avenue South, new construction of an addition. Staff has reviewed these projects, find that they meet their respective design guidelines, and recommends approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Any questions to Paul, anything on consent agenda?
Paul, the one on Fifth Avenue, is that the one that we have seen previously?
Yes, you approved a rear addition last year, maybe November, October, and this is for reconstructing a full width front porch that used to be there and a detached accessory dwelling unit at the rear.
Okay, open public hearing. Any questions about any of these projects that are on consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and second, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So first one today is 429 Broadway.
This is an application, 429 Broadway, for a modification to permit a rotating element, the hog's head in the middle of the sign. The allocation of sign area is also going to be exceeded if the signs are installed as they are. So staff's recommendation was to, well, let me get to the sign allocation. So this is the existing signage on the Broadway side. The wall sign there and the awning graphics add up to 49 square feet. The proposed projecting sign is 80 square feet. You can't read it on this slide, but that gives you nine square feet over as proposed. So staff's recommendation was to decrease the projecting sign by that amount, nine square feet. It could be the, the other signage could also be reduced as long as the overall allocation was not exceeded. So that was staff's recommendation on the Broadway sign and to approve the materials. The applicant is here to, to discuss our conditions.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Any questions for staff? Okay, thanks. So the applicant come forward and state your name and address?
Hi, Kayla Jocelyn, on behalf of Jocelyn &amp; Sun Signs and our customer Rippeys. The address would be 630 Murfreesboro Road, Asheville, Tennessee, 37210.
And I'm Bobby Jocelyn with Jocelyn &amp; Sun Signs, 630 Murfreesboro Road.
If you haven't noticed, we've been in the news a lot for pig heads on signs, so I'm glad we're able to continue the tradition. We're requesting a modification to be granted for an additional nine square feet. This is because of a few various reasons. One, they have a very interesting parcel as they sit on the corner of Broadway and Fifth Avenue. They're, on the Fifth Avenue side, they're directly across from Bridgestone. You've been to a concert, you walk out and you see Rippeys. On the Broadway side, they're across from Legends Corner. So due to their multiple main large entrances, one on Broadway and one on Fifth Avenue, they're given a rare opportunity, and one that doesn't happen a lot in our Historic Preservation District. So another company that would be similar to this, or another business, would be Honky Talk Central in Margaritaville. Both of them sit on a corner right down the street, still in your Historic District, one block over. And while they do not utilize both entrances on each individual road, they do have two signs. So both signs, if you've ever noticed, and you may not, because as sign people, we pull it off really well. When you have two signs, they always, always, always match. It doesn't make any sense for them not to be equal. If you're talking streetscape, you walk down, you come out of, you know, you're standing in the corner deciding if you're going to go towards Fifth Avenue or Broadway, you're like, why the heck are they different? That, it just doesn't make any sense from a streetscape perspective for our visitors to see. So secondly, I need to lend your common sense ear. You're all smart business people, there's no denying that. When you're building two products, it makes no sense to make them equal. It makes no sense to discuss, you know, having less chance for human error when you can have two identical products. It's a simple theory that aids in maintaining a high level of efficiency and productivity. Thirdly, by making one nine square feet smaller, our customer will have to obtain stamped engineered drawings. As we all know, those are not fun to get, easy to get, or cheap to get. So we're talking about your constituent and our end user spending a lot of extra money just so we can have nine square feet of difference in signage. Dad has a, sorry, Bobby, has something here for us.
Well, just to give you an idea, here's our nine square feet that we're talking about. And, you know, all this stuff nowadays is all computerized, driven, and what this boils down to, this customer will have to, and I mean, it's, it's just a economic thing more than anything. We'd like to have both signs matching, which makes sense right there at the corner. This is a really most visible intersection, one of them actually, that we have in downtown. And so we feel like in the interest of economics and visibility and streetscape, we're asking for the additional nine square feet here, which is obviously up in the air 15 feet. This is going to get small very quickly.
So, do you all have any questions for us?
Is there a sign there now?
Projecting one, no.
So why can't you make both of them four and a half square feet less or something?
It's an option. So we have a lot of, we're completely a turnkey sign company, so we have a lot of hands and minds that go into this entire process. To redraw them, we're looking at about two days' worth of work for our crafters, and so we were thinking this would be a much easier and simplistic idea for us to come down here and use our time instead of them use theirs.
I wish that would work a lot. I wish I could use that a lot.
Well, it's worth a shot, anyway. Secondly, and, and staff did bring this up, we do have an awning there that has probably about this three by three on it that can be removed to get us down if that's what we need to do.
That was my next question.
Yes, to answer your question, yes, that can be done.
And you don't have a drawing that shows one that's nine square feet less, do you? I see the, the two that you have here, is, are any of the, you know, I mean, you don't have how that would impact it?
Well, it would impact the readability, which-
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, you don't have a drawing that shows it, though?
No, not with us.
Okay. All right, any other questions to staff? I mean, not to staff, to the applicant?
You don't like us that much.
I think that you guys get A pluses on every presentation you make.
Thank you.
And you can call him daddy anytime you want.
I'm sorry.
He just got married two weeks ago, so I haven't totally recovered from the, the change in the names as well.
Okay. If there's no more questions, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Comment?
I'll begin. We've been over this a thousand times, you guys know my opinion. Signage on Broadway, Second Avenue downtown, signage anywhere is a Pandora's Box. We don't want to get into this company. We've seen a lot, they always do a great job, but it is up to the applicant to pay for his stamp and use only his allocated sign portion. We did this to the Roman Auditorium of all things, so I don't think we should change our minds today.
Richard?
But I would think the simplest solution is to redo the sides of your canopy and just, you can build those as you wanted. So I think it's, I don't, doesn't seem to be impactful not to have, I mean, you can use a, not, take the nine square feet off that canopy, that's like an easy solution to me, but I appreciate your efforts.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and second, I mean, motion, do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next one is?
2216 Belmont Boulevard.
All right, this is a request to demolish a non-contributing rear addition, construct a new rear addition, and to construct a new structure, a detached structure, structure in the rear yard. Staff recommends approval with conditions, including the condition that the detached building not be wider than the historic house. So the proposed rear addition to the historic house is shown here in purple. It's neither taller nor wider than the house, and is inset two feet, two inches from, from both rear corners. The design is contemporary but does not affect any character-defining feature of the home. As proposed, the addition, the rear addition meets the design guidelines. So here are the elevations for that addition. You can see in relation to the historic house and the rear elevation. The plan also proposes a detached structure which includes two dwelling units, which is shown here in red. It's neither a garage nor a detached accessory dwelling unit. The zoning here is a little different. It permits up to four dwelling units on the site. So staff finds that the proposed detached structure meets all design guidelines with the exception of height and scale. As proposed, the structure is both taller and wider than the historic house. So here we have the, the left elevation here. The additional height is approximately one foot, four inches, and it's located about 110 feet behind the front corner of, of the historic home. Staff finds that the proposed additional height could be appropriate in this location for the following reasons. The amount of height proposed is pretty minimal at one foot, four inches. The location is pretty far back from the front of the historic house, also given the zoning of the location which allows for multifamily, and the surrounding context, which includes quite tall structures on either side. So, there you see the right elevation, and then the alley and the front elevation, which will face the house. So while the proposed additional height could be appropriate at this location, staff finds that the additional width is not, especially when taken into consideration with the proposed additional height. The plan shows the detached structure extending approximately seven feet wider than the house on the left side. Historically, outbuildings, as we've seen, are, are subordinate to principal structures with regard to height, width, and area. So even with the zoning and the surrounding context, staff finds that the massing here is too large since the building is proposed to be both taller and wider than the principal building. Staff recommends reducing that width so that it matches the width of the historic house. So here are some images submitted by the applicant that show the context. The houses located on both sides of this house are both contributing and both either have a non-contributing addition or detached structure. So here you can see that the house to the right, which is at the corner of Linden and Belmont, includes a deep rear two-story addition that's closer to the alley. This addition was approved, actually was permitted before the overlay went into effect. The house to the left is also contributing and has a detached structure that was permitted in 2006. The preservation permit indicates that this structure is neither taller nor wider than, than the historic house. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the request with conditions, including the condition that the width of the detached structure not be wider than the historic house. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Melissa?
I guess I'm a little bit surprised that you guys are okay with the height. And I know it's a foot or foot six, it's not that much, but I really don't remember hearing that kind of recommendation.
Well, I think in this case, we are okay with it for a number of reasons. If it were a detached garage or a detached accessory dwelling unit, there are specific height restrictions written into both our design guidelines and the zoning code. In this case, it's not either of those. It is essentially two units in the rear yard, which is permitted by the zoning. And in this case, the, the height of the existing house, along with the distance from where that additional height will, will come. Also, you can kind of see here that the addition on the house on the corner, it actually extends back farther than this proposed detached structure. So in all likelihood, it's not going to be visible from, from either street as far as that additional one foot, four inches.
Okay. One more thing. So it's the, it's the zoning allotment that is not allowing us to call this an attached accessory dwelling unit, or a doo-doo, or a doo-doo, whatever?
Well, the zoning here is RM 20, which, so 20 units per acre, and as such, and we don't determine use, the zoning team has told them they could do four units, and so we're reviewing it.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for staff? All right, thanks, Melissa.
Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Manuel Zeiglen, architect, 516 Hagen Street, 37203. Yes, in regard to height also, the zoning, the point we've located the rear building on the site, the zoning would allow 230 feet, a 230-foot tall building at that point on the site. So we're, you know, way underneath what the zoning allows. It also allows us to come to the five-foot setbacks. As you can see from the photograph, I think maybe one or two shots before this one, there's no way you're going to ever see this addition from Belmont. You know, it's not visible at all. And so far back in the existing vegetation and the closeness of the houses on both sides really prevent a view of, of that part of the site. And I know this come, this is kind of unusual because it's an RM 20 zoning as compared to an R8 zoning in this district, so it's, it's got a little, some unique characteristics about it. And, and the Apple Marles, a block away from here, was, which is a sort of a good precedent in terms of a three-story building that fills up the site, that is an apartment building. So, so I think it's important to think of this as an apartment rather than as a doo-doo or a separate house. I was trying to think about how to present, and Lindsay Moffett, who's the zoning chairman for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighbors, wrote a letter, I don't know if you have a copy of it, but I thought I'd read it and let her do my presentation for me because she says it really well. "This letter is in support of the project at 226 Belmont as submitted. Manuel Zeiglen worked diligently with the immediate neighbors, Belmont Hillsborough Neighbor Association, Councilmember Berkeley Allen, and Metro Historic on this design. Our understanding is that we were all pleased with the results. Because the zoning is RM 20, which allows for the units in the rear of the property, this creates an important distinction as to properties zoned R8. A lot of input was generated to complete the design to make it compatible with adjoining properties. The courtyard is extremely important for the quality of life for the residents. Making the courtyard smaller in the long term is not good for the neighborhood and the viability of the rear units. The design is a result of direct negotiations with the impacted neighbors. Since the impacted neighbors have approved the design and are in favor of it, there is no reason for the building to be narrower. It is compatible. From BHN's perspective, because the current design does not enhance, does, excuse me, does enhance the usable green space with, in the courtyard, with the courtyard design, and also considers the adjoining property owner's view something rare in neighborhood development, we feel the design should be approved as submitted. Respect, sincerely, Lindsay Moffett, zoning chairman." So we, so I met, before we did anything, I went out to the site with Tim Walker, walked it, and talked about this location and the scale of the building. Then I met with Berkeley Allen, councilperson, councilmember, and then met with Lindsay Moffett, in that order, with sketches and with the more developed designs, and worked through, through this. And then I met with a neighbor who lives upstairs in the adjoining building, and her request was that we don't block the views from her windows, the view of the steeple that's just north of the site. And so one of, one of the big ideas was how, creating this courtyard between the existing house and the new, the new residences, that would become a real active space, could be shared by both occupants on this site, but also be, maintain sort of visual views for the, for the buildings on each side. If, if we had to make the building narrower, then we'd have to make them longer and cut down the courtyard, which really results in something that none of us want. You know, it's possible to do it, but it would, I think, have a more negative effect than we, we gained by making the buildings narrower.
Manuel, is there, on the, one on the right, looking at the plan, you insetted the wall. Can you do the same on the one on the left, just at the front, right by that stair like you did? I mean, just to have something that would make it a little narrower, you know, hit the width of the house in the, just in the front, and then flare out the back? Is that possible?
So do you have a copy of the plan there, or can you go to the plan? Yeah, do you mind? Or is there a floor plan? I think there was. The, I, I would think we could, Richard, answer your question. I can't, can't see why we wouldn't be able to. Let me see, while I say that, the, no, I'm sorry, actually, the, like, the fronts, the two front parts are equal, and then I brought it out a little bit once we got back past that adjoining neighbor. So there really isn't room then to make that unit narrower. Can you see that on the site plan? Yeah.
Manuel, where's the courtyard you're talking about?
So if you look at that site plan that's up, the, the pink building, that's the rear building, between it and then the back of the new addition, so that whole space is going to be developed as an outdoor courtyard for use by the residents.
And what is the footage between that and the historic house?
I think it's about 40 feet or so.
Thank you.
And it also, it basically, like, if you go back to one of the other slides that shows the context. One, yeah, that one. So the building on the left is a, is a kind of a more modern two-story studio building that, that, I forgot the musician that used to live there did, Ben Folds did. So the front of the, of our building lines up, you know, is even with the line of that building, and then it's, and we initially had the building on the right, Richard, the full width of the back part of it, and I, after I met with the neighbor, that's when I stepped that in a couple of feet just to give her a little more relief. And again, we met, you know, I met with councilmember Allen on the site, and she was fine with it and thought it had, you know, she and, she and Lindsay both appreciated the idea we were trying to create this space that could be shared by everybody, and, and didn't think it would have any impact, you know, the width as drawn would have any impact on the, on the actual setting.
Okay, anyone, any more questions for?
I got one last one.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, Manuel, we don't, I guess we haven't gotten around to the courtyard yet, planning-wise. Is it going to be a private courtyard between the two structures, or is it going to be a four-way stop?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we, we actually, one of our, one of the partners in the project lives in the front house that Land Elliot used to live in on, on the corner, and talked to some of the residents about becoming a shared courtyard. The only problem is the person on the first floor has her dog run there and wants to maintain it, but, you know, if they want to participate, that was originally the idea that it could be a shared space for all of them. The other thing is there's, which doesn't show up in this, doesn't show up in this picture, there's a row of trees along that side of that, that building. So by keeping this building back further too, it helps us maintain those existing trees, which is the intent.
So what you're saying is it was a good buffer between the two properties?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing, discussion?
I'd like to square and make a motion, if that's okay, and then just discuss it.
Go right ahead, Richard.
I move approval based on staff's recommendation, accepting number one, and that would be that we would accept the plan as drawn and not require it to be less wide than staff recommended. And I guess, of course, it's a unique-
I tell you what, let's get a, a second on that, and then you, I'm going to stop for discussion.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion.
Yeah, I think what's driving, driving me to, to approve it is, A, it's this unusual setting and unusual zoning. I don't think we've ever really seen anything like it. And the fact that the Neighborhood Association is, is, is for it and doesn't have a problem with the width, I think is, is, is very important for, for the applicant as well, so.
I do think that it's essentially important in most of these neighborhoods that we work in to have the, the back house subservient to the front architecturally. However, I think in this one, given the neighbors, especially the multifamily on the right, the zoning and the specific condition with the landscaping and the setback on this, I would support that as well.
Okay, so we, all right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. I will say, and we did get public comments from it too, by the way. Okay, so the first one of the rest of the new business is 903 Waldridge?
Yes. All right, so the next request is for 903 Wald, Waldkirk Avenue. It's to permit a side addition to a non-contributing house. This addition, as you see, is already there. It was constructed without permits. The request includes a setback determination, and staff recommends disapproval of the side addition and setback determination, finding that they do not meet the design guidelines. So the, the covered deck is located on the left side of the house near the front corner. The addition is currently 167 square feet, and it extends all the way to the left property line, so it has a zero-foot side setback currently. As part of this application, the applicant proposes to reduce the width of, of that covered portion by converting a portion to a trellis. However, the request will still require a side setback determination, taking it down from five feet to a zero-foot side setback. So, see that trellis? So per the design guidelines, additions should be located to the rear of the house, however side additions may be appropriate when the width of the lot exceeds 60 feet or the typical lot width in the area. In this case, the lot is 50 feet wide, which is pretty typical for this block of Waldkirk Avenue. In addition, when side additions are appropriate, they are required to be set back from the front corner of the house, which this is not. So with regard to the setback, staff recommends disapproval of the setback determination. And with, and with this, staff finds that the proposal doesn't meet any of those conditions where setbacks less than those required by zoning are appropriate and have been approved by the commission in the past. Furthermore, the wide side addition disrupts the, the rhythm of spacing along the street. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the side addition and setback determination, finding that the addition does not meet Section 3 for new construction and Section 4 for additions of the design guidelines for Waverly Belmont.
And I understand this is a violation, so it's already-
Correct.
And I understand this is a violation, so it's already been built?
Correct.
Were the drawings shorter before? Do you have the?
No, no. The drawings, you can kind of see here on the site plan. So the existing side addition, it extends, it's a covered porch, and it, the covering extends fully to the property line. So it makes...
It was never permitted.
It was never permitted.
So you all never saw any drawings whatsoever?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Does the deck get affected by this?
I'm sorry?
Is it?
Well, the...
I see the roof. Is the deck a part of the, it's one piece?
That's, that's a little tricky. Well, when you cover it, we review it. So the, the deck, I think, was part of what was constructed without a permit. So if the covering were removed, we would not review it under our design guidelines. However, zoning has told me that even if they remove it, the deck would not meet the side setback, which is another issue, so.
You're not here for the deck?
You're here for the covering. So the, what is under roof?
What is under roof?
What is under the roof?
Under roof, which is everything right now.
Correct.
Okay. Interesting. Okay. All right. Any more questions for staff? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
With the applicant, is applicant here? I'd like to come forward and please state your name and address.
Good afternoon. Michael Moen, 903 Waldkirk Avenue. Here on behalf of the owner, who is now my father-in-law, who lives in Iowa and purchased the house back in 2010, I believe, and when he did so, he built the deck without the covering, without a permit, and he didn't know the builder that he got to build it for my now-wife, who, who has recently wed to me in February. He didn't get a permit for it when he built it. The contractor didn't tell him about one. And so, in February, we got a letter for a violation, saying that the neighbor was complaining. We spoke with the neighbor. He wasn't complaining. And that same week, several complaints on Waldkirk Avenue came up, probably from a contractor, Coes was telling me. And we were curious. Then the roof was built about three years later by my wife. And so, the total investment's about nine to 10 grand, and that would be a detrimental financial burden for us. And it's really my father-in-law's problem, and I'm just trying to hear, trying to get a permit for it. And if we can get the neighbor's approval, is there anything that we could do to salvage at least some of the porch and turn it into a pergola or have the trellis?
Okay. You guys have any questions before we, before I say anything?
I do. I just want to have this straight. Your father-in-law bought the home?
Yes, sir.
Correct? You're originally married. You hired a contractor that just went out and did his own thing?
My father-in-law did, right.
Okay. That, that should have known the proper permits, but just didn't do, do diligence?
Correct.
Right? And now you're stuck with the mess?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have, so your, your proposal was taking, trying, are you, have you worked with staff at all about what you might be able to do to?
That's where the pergola option came into play, and that was presented to me by zoning first, and then historic, said that could be an option, which is when I got the plans drawn up. And in that process, they said, actually, you know, this, the five-foot setback rule, you're in violation of this, and so you would have to, there's a slim chance that you're going to be able to keep the roof, but the pergola is an option since it was put in before the historic overlay.
Melissa, could you explain that just a little bit more?
Okay. So, and I think we talked initially when you came in. So with regard to, I guess, our staff perspective, any, anything under, under a covering would be considered a side addition, which, when analyzed against the guidelines, this does not meet a situation where a side addition would be appropriate. So that, that is the basis of our recommendation. As far as, if he were to uncover it, just completely remove the entire covering, not replace with a pergola or a trellis or whatever, then we would not review under our design guidelines, because it would not be a covered living space. At that point, he would just meet with zoning, and they would determine if it met the setbacks and how to proceed.
Okay. But if, if he takes that covering off, we still have the issue of the setback?
At that point, it would be, it would be codes, under, under codes discretion.
Somewhere else.
So there would be an issue, but it...
Well, it would still be up to you to, to approve the setback. And, and we didn't see any reason for recommending approval of a setback determination.
And the whole, but in the pergola part is not what you're, is that what I understood? You're not recommending a pergola. You're recommending either it's off or, you recommend it off, totally?
Correct. That, that a side addition, whether it's a pergola or as it is now, would not be appropriate with respect to the design guidelines.
Okay. So, so now, do you understand that part of it now? Okay.
I understand. So even with the neighbor's consent, it, it doesn't matter even if it was put in before the overlay setback determination?
Yeah, unfortunately, well, I don't, the way we're set up is to review the guidelines and make sure that what's brought before is meets the guidelines or the intent of the guidelines. So, so it's, you know, I'm glad you have a good neighbor, but we have to kind of look at the bigger picture, but.
I understand.
That's a good question. Was it put in before they got overlay?
It was never permitted. So even if it was constructed before the overlay, it was, it was never permitted.
But I want to dig, that was my same question. Even if, if it wasn't permitted, that's one thing. But if it, there was no overlay, when it wasn't permitted, then there was no overlay. Am I wrong here?
Because it wasn't permitted, there are no, when it was installed, there are no regulations to follow.
Doesn't have standing.
Because it wasn't permitted.
Because it wasn't permitted.
So now, to get approval for it, it would need to follow existing guidelines.
Right. But, but back then, perhaps it could have been permitted, because it wouldn't have gone through this commission. Is that correct?
Yeah.
If there was no overlay?
But there's just speculation that, because it wasn't permitted.
But if we, but if we, if we look at it, we don't set the side, I mean, we, we can give a waiver on the side setback, but that's a zoning designation, isn't it?
Well, again, you, you review setbacks.
Right.
So, I know this is very confusing. So the deck alone, we wouldn't necessarily review, but it's in the setback area. So if it's, if a change to the setback is to be allowed, that would come from you.
What's the, what was the setback before the historic overlay?
Well, my marriage is complicated.
Yeah. Okay. If, are there no more questions for the applicant? Okay. You have another?
Question for us?
Oh, did she have another one for us? I'm sorry.
She answered it.
Okay. All right. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this, this case? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Discussion?
I'll start.
Yeah, you kind of discussed it, or, or motion?
This is a pretty weird one. You know, looking at the, the fact that it wasn't permitted, as far as the applicant goes, that, that fault is on your contractor. He should be held accountable for that. He knew better. And that, that's his deal. But there's this issue of the fact that, however this went down, there was no overlay. And so who would have given the permit? It wouldn't have been us. It could have been Coes. I don't know this, that, or the other. But, you know, we keep talking about the fact that it wasn't permitted. It's still there. It's old. Why isn't it grandfathered?
The, the, the deck was prior to the overlay. The roofing was after the overlay.
The roofing was after the overlay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
But, but, but either way, if there's going to be any setback determination, that's this body.
But if this man takes the roof off of this deck, then it's just a deck, and he has to deal with Coes on the setback.
And then Coes would come to us, because it's an encroachment and setback.
So it's just a big struggle?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
I just commented that, so it'd be, so it's an encroachment period?
Yes, it is.
So because they're building something new, they have to follow back to zoning, and they need to be within five foot of that line?
Who sent, who sent the, where did the, I'm going blank here. Where did the, the notice of default come from? Us or zoning?
The violation?
The violation, yes. Was it us?
It started with Coes, and then I'm not sure who notified us. I don't remember.
The applicant came to see us at the development center.
Okay. You have a motion?
We'd like to set a five-foot setback, then he could, he could just have like a four-foot deck. I mean, that, that's conceivable.
Yeah, I think there's, it, it is not one issue alone, I guess is the easiest way to say it.
Right, right.
It's, it's a side addition.
Right.
It doesn't meet the guidelines. It doesn't meet the setbacks, and it was constructed without a permit.
But if we set the five-foot setback, then all he, all he would be able to have is a deck that's four feet wide.
Potentially, but I, I recommend not trying to make, it, it's wrong in every way we look at it, and I'm afraid if we try to piecemeal it, we're going to run into an issue. The fact is, it, it was constructed without a permit, and it doesn't meet any of our guidelines.
Thank you. I get it.
Go ahead.
Thus, I will make a motion for 903 Waldkirk Avenue to approve, per staff recommendation, to disapprove the addition, as it does not meet Section 3 and Section 4 of the Waverly Belmont Conservation zoning overlay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Do we, do we have to have four votes?
You have to have four votes.
Okay. I, I vote aye. Okay. 737 Benton Avenue.
Here we are at 737 Benton Avenue, and this is, as you can see, a contributing two-story Queen Anne House. And the application is to construct a two-story rear addition, a right-side port cochere, and to construct a two-story outbuilding that contains a detached accessory dwelling unit, starting with the rear addition. It's a rear left corner of the house, which is the top of that slide. The front is to the left. As I said, it's a two-story rear addition. There is a two-story rear addition there now. So that will be replaced or reconfigured, enlarged essentially to accommodate the new addition. The new addition will step in from the rear left corner of the house, which is an appropriate location because of the existing addition. The addition obviously is two stories tall, with eaves matching the height of the eaves at the existing house and extending back. It will also have a one-story portion on the addition, which will project out to the left to be wider than the house. Staff finds that a wider addition is appropriate in this location, because the lot is so wide, 134 feet wide, and because it doesn't impact the front or sides of the historic building. It is completely connected to, to the house at the rear, where the existing addition is. As I said, the eve heights match the eaves on the house. The materials will also be compatible for additions, including cement fiber siding, stone foundation, and an asphalt shingle roof. Staff finds the rear addition generally to be appropriate. On the other side of the house is a proposed port cochere. It extends to the right 21 feet. That's the existing house, right side of the house. There's what appears to be an original porch or an early porch that's been enclosed with siding, the back right corner of the house. That's roughly the location where the port cochere will be. As I said, it extends out to the, to the right, 21 feet from the house. The width of the port cochere is 21 feet, with a wing wall and columns, reducing the actual opening to 16 feet. The commission, as we discussed on the previous case, has approved side porch additions or side additions on houses on lots wider than 60 feet. And while this lot is a lot wider than 60 feet, staff finds that this addition is not appropriate, because the house is situated so far to the right, and this addition will actually be on the narrow side of the lot. Also, with the second, the two-story addition on the other side being wider to the left, staff finds that it would not be appropriate to make additions, to use additions to make a house wider in both directions. Additionally, staff finds that the proposed port cochere is wider than is typical or appropriate for a port cochere. On the outbuilding, which is located or will be located at the rear of the lot, because of, the location of the garage requires a setback determination, the standard setback for a building of this size would be a 20-foot rear setback. They've proposed five. Staff finds that this is an appropriate location, recommends approval of the setback determination. The outbuilding will be two stories, with a garage on the first story, and also a bathroom and porch on the first story, with the second story having the remainder of the living space for the accessory dwelling unit. Staff finds that the outbuilding does not meet the design guidelines or the zoning section applicable for detached accessory dwelling units, because the footprint is 1,067 square feet, whereas 1,000 square feet is the maximum allowed. Also, just flipping through here, the, the maximum allowed living space for an accessory dwelling unit is 700 square feet, including the porch, the bathroom and hallway on the first story, the 570 feet in the upper story, and then 300 feet of what's labeled as storage. Staff considers all of that to be living space. Staff finds that this far exceeds the maximum allowed living space for accessory dwelling Onto the elevations. The materials, staff finds to be appropriate, brick, stucco panels, asphalt shingle roof. However, the, the size, the scale of the building is greater than the guidelines or the zoning code allows. The eve heights are 18 and 20 feet. The zoning code allows up to 17 feet for two-story accessory dwelling units. The roof height is 28 feet 10. The zoning code allows datus to be 27 feet, although the Historic Zoning Commission guidelines have not allowed any datus to be taller than 25 feet. Staff finds that this exceeds those dimensions as well. As you can see, those are, it's a big house, so the, the building is not, not trying to be taller than the primary by any account, but it is larger in size, scale, than the zoning code and ordinance and design guidelines allow. And summing up the aspects of this project, staff recommends approval of the proposed rear addition to the house, with conditions that the roof color, stone sample, window door selections, and any permanent landscape features are approved by staff prior to purchase and installation. Staff recommends disapproval of the port cochere, finding that it does not meet Sections 3B1A, 3B1B, 3B1D of the design guidelines for additions. And staff recommends disapproval of the proposed outbuilding and accessory dwelling unit, finding that it does not meet the Section 32H of the design guidelines and the applicable standards in the zoning code, Section 17.16030.
And I, I see that we have in our packet the checklist for the datus that we, that you went through. Okay. Any, any other questions for Sean? Okay. Thanks. Would the applicant like to come forward? Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Yes. Hello, my name is Blaine Bonnades, I live at 1606 Linden Avenue, I'm the architect for the project. I've prepared a slideshow for you. I'll just read it. Although the one-story component of this addition will extend several feet outside the silhouette of the primary form of the house, it will be no wider than the original front corner porch pavilion. So in other words, it's a rear addition, but it's not a side addition because it's not beyond the silhouette of the house. So that in and of itself is confusing to me when they refer to two side additions. Well, it's not a side addition, it's a rear addition, and therefore, we don't have two side additions, we have one side addition, which is port cochere. With regards to the port cochere, the port cochere is beyond the 50% line of the original structure. The new port cochere is to extend, the new port cochere is going to be totally transparent, we're going to be opening up the original porch that was there, and it's an easily removable addition, and it's very sort of low impactful. Next slide. Do you want to, do we want to talk about the house first and then the?
I tell you what, why don't you go through it all and then we'll go back to it, that might be easier.
Okay. Staff suggests that an open porch be deemed livable space to be included in the 700-square-foot allowance. However, daddo worksheet clearly defines livable space as space that is conditioned, that's their words. Therefore, the open porch should not be included in the 700-square-foot allowance. Staff also suggests the storage space upstairs included in the 700-square-foot allowance, this space should not be included in the 700-foot allowance because it is simply a product of formal decisions made the detached unit look more in character with the original structure. Daddos or outbuildings located on corner lots should have similar architectural characteristics, including roof form, pitch, and existing, to the existing principal structure. Next slide. As the design guidelines recommend for a corner lot, the roof and pitch form are similar in character to the principal structure. Given an eight-foot O garage door is more appropriate in proportion in comparison to a 7O, a nine-foot first floor height is needed. Eve height is established by simply adding the first and second floor with the flooring members. And you can see in the diagram, we have a nine-foot ceiling downstairs, 18 inches for structure, and then an eight-foot plate height upstairs. Since the goal is to maintain a similar character, lowering the second floor plate height would not be appropriate, as there does not exist a condition in the original structure where the window extends above an eve. As well, dormers do not appear inappropriate as there is one instance of a dormer on the original structure, which is not a space-making device, rather a decorative element. Next slide. The proposed garage will be significantly shorter than the original structure by 15 feet 7 inches. The existing house is 43 feet 7 inches tall, the proposed garage is 28 feet tall. Next slide.
Next slide, or is that the last?
No, that's it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said next slide.
I did.
Oh, you did, okay. Okay, taking your suggestion now, let's go back up to the main house, and that first So listen first with the, if you'll stay here, for the conversation about his point about it being a side addition as opposed with the facing Benton Avenue, is there, I could see where that would be a confusing point. Can you make your, I'm sorry, I'm looking at you, I should be looking at you, I'm sorry, Melissa. Sean, about why it is a side addition as opposed to a rear addition?
It is noted as a rear addition in the staff report.
Oh, okay, good. I was going by.
The references to both, it says two-sided, you know, what they refer to as hammerhead. Well, it can't be a hammerhead if there's only one side addition.
Okay, and?
I believe it says an addition's wider than the house on both sides, so you have a rear addition that's wider and then a side addition. By nature, it's wider as well.
But it's not wider than the house, it comes up to the edge of the house, as you can see in the diagram. The side addition does not exceed the front facade as you look at it from the street. I mean, that's as plain as day.
Gotcha, okay. Before we leave this, does everybody understand this, his case? And I guess where, what the staff is saying that with the primary porch facade, is that what you're using, or as far as being wider?
Well, the line there that matches the line of the proposed no addition also touches on the rounded conical pavilion on the front porch.
But you'll notice there is a, there's a line that's drawn from that side of the building that goes all the way back, and the only part that projects beyond the building into the porch zone, if you want to call it that, is a lowered portion of the addition. So it is, it's not, you can't see over it and see the addition because it's in the same plane vertically as the front porch. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Root, yeah. Are we all clear on this? I was just about to clarify. So this, I'm looking at this red dotted line, I see the, what I'm going to call the north end of your addition, it cuts through the steps, right?
Yep.
And that, since it does not exceed the steps or the round portion of the porch, then that's what you're telling us, it does not exceed the facade of the house?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be clear, thank you.
Now, if you drew another line along the bulk of the house, cutting off the porch, the two-story portion is within that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes perfect sense. All right, thank you.
Chair sent him, any? Okay, all right. Any other questions about, ready to go to the port cochere? Okay, port cochere.
Can I just point out or clarify? I did say in the staff recommendation, although the one-story component of this addition extends out several feet outside the silhouette of the primary form of the house, it will be no wider than the original front corner porch. So, I mean, this is not anything that I was, different than I was saying. And getting into the port cochere, which you're about to get into, staff finds it would not be appropriate to have additions wider than the primary building on both sides, as would be the case with the proposed rear addition and the port cochere, so.
And it's not wider on both sides.
Okay.
It's only wider on one side.
Could you go to the, your next slide?
So there's an original porch in the rear, which was enclosed at some point, so we're going to open it up, you're going to be able to see the original structure, but we're not going to cover up the original porch at all, we're just going to put a roof plane above that original porch. So in essence, we're not doing anything to obscure that rear corner at all. We're actually enhancing it. And it's not a screen porch, it's not a structure, it's just a horizontal plane with two columns.
It's on your elevation.
Yeah.
It's in our.
Rear elevation. Yeah.
We can see that in your rear elevation.
You can see it in the front elevation, you can see it in the side elevation. And that would be on, you know, the renderings that you saw earlier, not these particular slides that I brought.
We forgot that. Any comments about the port cochere, port cochere? I could be to say that better.
I do have a question for the architect on the port cochere. A lot of your massing, a lot of the scale of, and the elements that you've picked up, pick up the geometry and the shape, and the one thing that did seem to be oversized was the port cochere. Can you explain why it is so wide?
The port cochere extends to the five-foot setback. We're not asking for any variance whatsoever. So by right, you know, you can build to a five-foot setback. We are centering the garage door on the center of the port cochere. The wider the port cochere is, the further away the outbuilding or the daddo becomes from the main house, which is, the landscape architect will talk more about that. So it's kind of has a dual purpose.
Sean, could you remind us of your disapproval of the port cochere?
Problem with the setback here on the port cochere?
No, it's the two together. I mean, there's no doubt that he's done a great job with the design and how it's connected to the building and the proportions, and it's a very large lot, and it's a very large house, so it can accommodate more than a lot of homes. The concern was that having both, having this rear addition project out beyond the main form of the house, and then also having a port cochere, not only having a port cochere, but having one that's wider than you would see historically, having both of those elements together. So I think it's, once again, it's kind of hard to separate the two issues.
Certainly is.
There was a comment in the staff recommendation about reducing it by four feet, and that might be amenable to you guys. I think we'd be willing to do it too, meet in the middle, if that helps, matters. We'd still be well within our setback.
Yeah, I don't, did y'all mention that as a recommendation to cut it back at all, or?
We did. I just want to clarify that there is no by right to meet a five-foot setback, because that's what you're here to do, is review what's appropriate for the district, and that construction may or may not go to the five-foot setbacks. You approve things every day that don't go five feet to five feet. But yes, we thought if you got to that place where you did feel comfortable with both the rear addition extending out and a port cochere, that if you did approve the port cochere, that it should be lowered in width by four feet so that it's more in proportion with historic port cocheres. But our main recommendation is to lose one or the other, to change something so that it's not extending both sides.
Yeah, the daddo is one of the ones that's, I want to make sure we really review that one, because we don't, we went through so much with the daddo and the checklist is what we've been holding everybody very accountable to. One of the points you brought up about the unconditioned space, can you respond to that?
There's no.
The formula, Sean?
Actually, I can. That's something that you have set, that that is a part of the footprint, so whether it's a porch or not. Because the concern was then, well, if we allow for porches, then people will come in with full width porches, and then you're getting out of those requirements that were originally set in the ordinance that neighborhoods agreed with. So the porches have always been considered part of the footprint.
Specifically says if it's non-conditioned, it's not considered part of the footprint. It says that.
Problem, let's get to the bottom of this. I mean, it's only fair, it's only fair. So what's our rule? Non-conditioned space, or is the porch part of the footprint? Because, I mean, that's what these guys have to go by when they start doing this work, so we need to get to the bottom.
We've spent a lot of time with that understanding.
In the past, you've always counted porches as the footprint.
What's our code say?
I'll look it up for you.
Please.
So if you might, I'll give that a few minutes if you want to continue your discussion.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Then the storage as conditioned?
Not, it's not conditioned. It's unfinished space. If you've ever been in one of these houses, they're big and imposing, and they've got 12-foot ceilings, but there's not a single closet that's big enough to hang clothes, if you can believe it or not.
If there's, do we have any more comments to the applicant? Because we could open up some public hearing and make sure there's more discussion.
I can give you a little more information about the footprint. The living space, that's the living space. I don't see where it says conditioned space as part of the footprint.
I think it was on the daddo checklist.
Well, we go by the ordinance, and I don't see it in the ordinance.
It's not in the Metro code.
Well, why is it on the daddo checklist?
I can look into that for you, but we follow the ordinance.
That'd be great.
Okay, while you're looking through that, let me go ahead and see if there's any public comment to it. Did you have any more, anything else you want to make, Blaine?
We want to talk about the daddo, right?
Yes. Yeah, if there's anything else, any more questions about the daddo?
So corner lots in particular, and it's in the code, should take on the character of the original house. The original house has 12-foot ceilings, first and second floor. It's a very tall structure. This is, in relation to daddos, a tall daddo, but it is, you know, in liking of, you know, what the original house is. We have a, you know, eight-foot garage door, which is appropriate, you need nine-foot ceiling height to make the garage door operate, you have structure, and then we have an eight-foot four plate height. That's about minimum because the eve drops down over, below the plate. Therefore, our windows sort of get shoved up against, underneath that eve. So we're down about as tight as we can get before this thing starts to look, you know, squatty. And that wouldn't be in character with the original building. So our calculations and their calculations are slightly different. We're more than willing to provide information otherwise. We came up with a lower square footage, for example, the footprint. I think if I take the brick off the building, we'd be right at 1,000. I think we are right at about 50 square feet over, which is approximately the size of a king-size mattress. I don't think that's a huge difference. And we've got, you know, some minimal clearances in there. We've got a three-foot, six-inch stair, we have a small shower, a small hallway, et cetera. I mean, there's nothing elaborate about what's downstairs to get you upstairs, it's all minimal offsets.
It seems a lot, mostly it is a lot on the square footage calculations. You haven't found that yet anymore on that, Robin?
It's not in the code.
So it's not in there?
I did just look at the checklist, and it does say, is the planned conditioned living space more than 700 square feet? That's the question that's in the checklist.
And of course, that's different from the footprint, and it's the footprint that's over, as I believe as well as the conditioned space.
The footprint's not over, I mean, it's over slightly, but.
Over 67 square feet?
I'm sorry?
It's over.
Slightly, okay.
Well, let's, let me open up public hearing, and if we need to call you back, we will.
Can we have the landscape architect give his presentation?
If you would just be brief, because we've gone over a little bit.
Can you bring up that other, it's just four slides. My name's Scott Desmukes, landscape architect, working with Blaine on just the siding of the building. And all I simply want to sort of talk a little bit about is layout and sort of appropriateness from a landscape perspective, which I think is important when you are looking. which I think is important when you are looking at a Victorian home on a site as large as this. So just overall coverage, I just, we wanted to outline that we're well within any allowable coverage. But the main house, or, or the main house footprint's about 3,300 square feet. The garage, proposed garage footprint is 1,040, or there's a few numbers that are discrepancy, but we, we understand we're 50 to square feet over. So the driveway, impervious surface proposed is 1,500 square feet. The walkway and patio is about 1,100 square feet. So in total, the total impervious cover is about 32%. I think that there's sort of allowable coverage on this site is 50%, just for point of reference per the, per the setting. Next. There was some question about the sort of relationship with the portico chair and, and the alignment of it. And I, I just want to point out that the portico chair is, the center line of that is aligned to the new garage. The blue line at the bottom of the page is the existing western edge of the existing driveway. So we're actually pulling the driveway in a little bit. That's important to me from a landscape architecture perspective, to increase the buffer between this house and the sort of adjacent house. I know there's some concern that this is the more narrower end, but in some ways, what we're trying to do is consolidate the density on, on, on this edge so that we preserve this sort of open space on the eastern edge of the, of the lot. There's also a little bit of a game we're playing, or dance we're playing, with the location of this relative to some, to some very mature existing trees on the alley side, on the sort of upper right-hand side of the page. So we're trying, we don't want to, if we were to reduce the width of that driveway, we feel like we would then need to push that outstructure further east, which then starts to encroach upon those existing trees, which we find are critical to trying to preserve. Next. And then we are trying to minimize the loss of trees. The trees that we are losing for this by the locating it where we are is a very small dogwood by the new garage building, and then two small understorey trees by the currently enclosed porch. And you can see we're including, preserving the larger trees. Next. And then this is, just gives you a little bit of context. There's about a 2% drop from the proposed portico chair debt back to the alley. That is why we're proposing a pull-through garage for two cars. And so we, that, the interiors of that garage will slow down. I think there's, with respect to the height of the structure, we just want to be clear on what the perspective is of staff, where are they taking those measurements from, whether it's the low side of the alley or the high side. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, no, seeing none. Just, I'll call you back if we need to, for any questions, Blaine. But I'll close public hearing right now. Discussion, maybe we take them all, if you guys don't mind, let's just look, talk them piece by piece, just, and then, I think the first two, though, are together, because the portico chair and the rear addition. So open up discussion.
Well, I'll start again. For me, what we're trying to determine here before we begin talking about this is the rear addition. Is it a rear addition? Is it a side addition? It can't be both. We don't need to treat it like it's both. And from the diagram that we saw, it depends on what we determine, what extrudes the, the front side of the house, right? And does the portico chair infringe on the setback or not? Those are the two fundamental questions here before we get into this, as far as I'm concerned.
I think they are, staff says it is a rear addition, but it just, it extends, extends wider. But they do agree that it is a rear addition.
You can't wear two hats. It's got to be one or the other. We need, and I guess that's on, in our lap today.
It, it is noted in the report as a rear addition, that extends beyond the side wall. And, and the, the issue with the portico chair is, is not the setback, but the, the side setback, but the width of, of having two things extend beyond those sidewalls. Does that help?
It does. It does, thank you. It does.
Also in staff recommendation, the comment is that the Queen Anne style in Nashville typically did not have portico chairs. I think that's historically, the way we would view it, is that it's not normal for that particular style. However, it does say that if we find it appropriate, then that we would be to the narrower yard, to narrower. So I just want to bring that up, that it's not typical for that type of a house, which, which gives me some reason on why it wouldn't go in this house. I'm not saying that it shouldn't, but it seems to have some bearing on a historical point of view.
And, and that's not to say there's never been a Queen Anne style with a portico chair, because there certainly are. But you don't see that tip, as a typical feature in this neighborhood.
I think let's, let's decide too, as far as a feeling about the rear addition that extends wide. Do we, that diagram does show that it is adjacent to the edge of the round porch, and where is it? That's really the key to that, if it's really, if, if the commission feels like it goes over. How do you feel, what are comments about that?
I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused, but I don't see that as a point of discussion. What I'm, I think I'm hearing is that the rear addition is extending beyond the side of the home.
Right.
And that's, and forget, and that's okay, because they're going to grant them that point. So that's within the side of the home. And this needs to be scooted to match the side of the home there. I think that's what staff is saying.
Okay, so you guys couldn't see him moving on this picture, but what, he's asking, should, are you saying that the dadu should be moved? What is that, east?
Or top of, towards the top of the page?
No, we're not saying the dadu should or shouldn't move. I, I think what the applicant was saying is that it would move if the portico, if the driveway changes.
Yeah.
And changing the portico chair.
What I, what I gathered in, is that it would, if, if it, if they didn't have the rear addition, that didn't extend, because staff feels like it should stop here, then the portico width may not be an issue. But the fact that it extends further and the portico is what staff's, staff's issue is.
What's the issue with the dadu?
Well, that's a whole kind of difference.
That's a whole other conversation. But I think I can make this easy, if, if you don't mind, Brian. I'll try. Well, I'm going to try this.
Let's just, but I say the dadu is separate from the decision.
I'm not talking about the dadu. The rear addition, it's, it comes a matter of semantics. Are you lining up with the existing facade of the existing home? Or are you lining up with the existing facade of the porch? Okay, we can pick that apart on both sides of the ball forever, okay? Now, the portico chair is not infringing on easement. It's just designed bigger than historic portico chairs were. Now, I've said on this commission a thousand times, and I'm of the opinion that historic properties should be allowed to evolve. Now, they have room to do this, so I have no problem with the portico chair. And what we're hearing from staff is that, well, man, they're, they're getting a whole lot on this side, and they're asking for a whole lot here, but they really haven't exceeded what we require. So we've got to sit and ask ourselves, how, how, how do we perceive this evolution of this home?
So making even simpler, basically, you, you're okay with how they've interpreted, how the applicant has interpreted?
I believe, I believe I am. I, I could pick some, some, some heights. I could pick it, some stuff like that. But as far as looking at the site plan, I'm not bothered by the portico chair, nor am I bothered by the rear addition, since it doesn't exceed the limits of the porch.
Yeah, I, I hear you, Sam. I guess personally, if there's a way to lessen the size of the portico chair, I think it would be nice. It just, it just seems a little out of scale. I mean, if there's a way, you know, there's, there's some willingness to, to make it narrower. And staff recommended four feet, applicant recommended two. But I think if that's on the table, then that should be, we should ask for that.
We can probably play nice. Yeah.
What about you guys?
Well, and I think it's, it's in the purview of this commission, as well as every other historic commission, to really look at new additions respecting the nature and, and vibrancy. And this is a beautiful historic home that has a great deal of historic character and quality within the neighborhood. It's a beautiful lot, a beautiful setting. And to me, it is within our purview to look at the scale of the portico chair. I don't see an issue with the rear addition, but I think that putting the portico chair in is, is insensitive from the standpoint of the size of it versus the, the balance of the house. And if that means that the, that the owner has to look at either waggling the driveway or moving the, the detached structure a couple of feet, then, you know, I, I don't think that's a deal killer on this.
So minimizing the portico chair. Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll come back to a motion about that. So you guys be thinking about it?
Yeah.
So let's, let's move on to the dadu, which I think really gets more to interpretation and calculation. But I just want to make sure that this commission doesn't step out of our dadu range here, because we, we don't want to get out of that since we just got it. So do you feel like it'd be helpful for us to talk about the calculations from staff? Or do you have any specific questions?
I would like to hear from staff about the exact calculations, please. I know we've heard it already, Sean, but we heard a lot, so don't think we're too smart. Cut us some slack.
Well, obviously, we looked at the footprint, measured the, the footprint, and came up with a number we did. And factoring the, and garages, stairs, utility space, looks like there's a, you know, a water heater closet. Those sorts of things are not included. We don't include those in living space. With the porch, in this instance, you can see that it's not a stoop or a little projecting porch. It is covered space within the massing under the primary roof of the building. It's integral to the, to the form, size, and scale of the building.
What, I can save you some breath here. What I'm really getting at is, aside from conditioned versus non-conditioned space, footprint, et cetera, et cetera, are we online with easements in placement of this garage? Are they, are they in line?
It requires a setback determination to reduce from the, the bulk zoning 20-foot setback to the five that's proposed.
We're at five.
Yeah, staff is supportive of that.
That's what I really wanted to know. Thank you.
Can you go back? So the, the key benchmark is 1,000 square feet, and your calculation hit 1,067?
1067.
And then the other benchmark is the height, which should be 25 feet, and this is 28 or something?
28 and change.
Okay, were those the two main items?
Well, the eve height goes along with it. And, I mean, it's, perhaps for you to discuss the, the living space, whether that includes covered porch and storage area.
I want to question you, that's.
That should only be 700 feet? So without the storage, it's less than seven, it's okay, but with the storage, it's not?
If you, so I got around 1350 or 1325, something like that. If you take off 300 feet, square feet of storage, it's still 1,000, and then about 300 for the porch, so.
So, so I think one of the easy ways to deal with this is the regs state 1,000 square feet. The, the chart states 700 conditioned square feet. I think it would be easy for us to put a condition on there that would not exceed 1,000 square feet and 700 conditioned square feet. And then if we need to go back and look at the regs in the future, we can do that. But that, that to me makes it, it makes the argument a whole lot easier than whether you're including the porch or not and the storage area and that kind of thing.
All right, so one last wrench. And I agree with you, Cheryl, but, so let's say that the architect goes back and he, he shaves off that square footage and the storage. Okay, so what, how, what does that make the building look like all of a sudden? Is it lower? Does it cut half the storage off? And what, how does that, how's that manifest itself? You know, if it's empty space, and we call it stores, it was still empty space. And it's, you can do whatever you want up there, as far as sticking things.
But it's part of the footprint. It's, it's causing.
Yeah, but do we reduce the footprint? I mean, think about this. If he, if he shaves it from the storage in the attic, is he reducing the footprint? Probably not. Probably not.
Oh, but, but the thousands for the footprint. So I'm saying 67 feet, you pull 67 feet out of the footprint. It's a pretty.
So the storage has nothing to do with this equation whatsoever?
Not that one, no.
It has to do with the condition, there's a 700 square foot.
Condition space versus non-conditioned space? Okay, fair enough.
Queen size bed, more or less.
Okay.
What about the eve height? Same?
To, to me, the eve height, in this case, there is a unique condition, given the massive size of this house. When I drove by the property, you know, this is not a typical house that we're seeing in most of the neighborhoods that we deal with. This is a huge lot and a, and a massive house. I don't have as much problem, because I think this is a unique condition here. I wouldn't want a wholesale, you know, approval, but, but for this one unique condition, I think it is different enough from most of the conditions we see.
On that, on that line, is it taller? It's not taller than the primary house. So we're, that is within line of the guidelines.
The eve height is still in the code, though. So I would.
In the dadu regs.
Right, so I would just encourage you to follow the Metro Code and what they say.
Is that right, or we can, we, we can override the Metro Code? Okay.
Technically, we've been told that it's possible. But because this code was written in such a way that the neighborhoods would be comfortable with allowing for use that wasn't otherwise allowed, we have tried to, to maintain that, because that's what the neighborhoods are expecting. They're not expecting you to go over. So there's a lot of language in there that shouts, not shoulds or maybes, like you have in your guidelines. It's very, very specific. And it's our understanding that the commission, you know, up to this time, has stuck to that, because it is in the code, it is allowing for a use that wouldn't otherwise be allowed. And as soon as you open that door, you're going to have to do it for everybody. So do please keep that in mind.
Yep.
Could you remind us? Could you please remind us what this particular, Sean? What is the, what is the ridge, ridge height of this house? And what should it be?
For the detached accessory dwelling unit? The, the design guidelines say 25 feet for the, the maximum ridge height. The ordinance used to say 25 feet. Recently was changed to allow up to 27 square feet. The guidelines have not been revised.
You're talking dadu?
Dadu.
And I will add that they were purposely not revised, that that's what the neighborhoods agreed on.
The 27, is that what you said?
The 25.
The planning commission, I think, helped, or the planning department was involved in revising the dadu regulations to allow 27 feet to accommodate a future.
Outside of the overlays.
Overlay, which never passed, so, but.
Well, no, for, for outside of the overlays, because you're not the only ones that, that reviewed daddos. So there were multiple charrettes that were held with neighborhoods, and we went over what these regulations should and shouldn't be, what the neighborhoods were comfortable with. And again, I can't stress enough that for however many years now, you have been sticking to those requirements for daddos.
Which is not 27, but 25.
So, so for, for right here, right now, today, how far off are we?
Three feet. Three feet, 10 inches.
Three feet, 10 inches.
Okay.
So not a little bit, but some. Yep.
All right, we got a lot on the plate here, but.
We had some good discussion.
Yeah.
It's been fun, huh?
You know, it might be good to, Cyril, to get a motion out there and then we could, we can, we can talk about it if we need to.
Uh, so I moved that with respect to 903 Waldrich, I'm sorry, 737 Benton Avenue, that, that we approve with the, with the side addition, the rear addition as presented, and that we approve the portico chair with the restricting, reducing the width of that by three feet, and that we reduce, we approve the DADU if it's not to exceed 1,000 square feet of footprint, 700 square feet of condition space, and 25 feet in height.
And eaves?
That's in the eaves proportion, yeah.
Okay.
What was, what was the number for the eaves?
17.
17.
17. Okay. I have a motion and a second. I mean, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And I'll stop. Wait, is there any discussion?
I've got, I've got one on point. When, in terms of the portico chair, I agree with, with Cheryl, but I believe that we asked, the staff asked for four and the architect wanted to go two, not three. Huh? I, I think that's fair. And, you know, again, this, this has been a tough one, and you guys have known me a while, and like I say, I believe these historic properties should be allowed to evolve, and I think what Blain's done here is a wonderful evolution, uh, evolution. And I hate to have to pick at it, but the rules are the rules. And I think if we could give him the two feet he wants on the portico chair, get off his back about the rear addition, and he made us halfway about the, the, the DADU, I think that's a pretty square deal. So that's my two cents. Two feet. No, two feet.
Well, not necessarily. I just doubt, he'd have to make an amendment to his, um, motion. Yeah. Or, and you're welcome to keep it through. You've already made your motion. We have had a second.
Yeah, I'll just, you can, you can.
I'm willing to amend it to two feet.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. And if you guys don't mind, I'm not going to vote on that, make a motion on that. I'm just going to, if you don't mind, we'll just accept that motion as an amendment, amend it to two feet. Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Good job. Thanks, guys.
Just a second.
1111 Lillian Street.
All right. The next request is a request to demolish a non-contributing duplex and to construct a new duplex at 1111 Lillian Street. The plan before you meets the design guidelines for height, scale, setbacks, and rhythm of spacing, materials, roof shape, orientation, and rhythm and proportion of openings as proposed. The infill is oriented toward Lillian Street, and parking is accessed from an existing curb cut off of Lillian Street and will be located behind the building. The structure is one and a half stories with a maximum height of 29 feet and an eve height of 11 feet.
Excuse me one second. Um, could, Paul, could you tell them, ask them, could they move for? Okay, I'm sorry, Melissa.
And the eve height is 11 feet, eight inches at the front. This fits the, the context in the immediate area where houses range from 24 to 32 feet and include primarily one and one and a half story homes. Here are the side elevations as proposed, the left side and the right and the rear. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the infill with conditions as set forth in the staff recommendation as the request meets the design guidelines.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, I thought you had a question for him or her.
It's a matter of just looking at the rear elevation. Looks like the, I don't know, must be, the windows are just a little off.
As far as lining up with the first floor?
Yeah. All right. And, and it is the rear, so we do not scrutinize those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it's just a measurement thing.
Any, any more questions for staff? Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here? I'd like to come forward and discuss the case. State your name and address.
Sandy Adams with Studio S Architecture, and I don't have any questions. Easy breezy. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Um, do you agree with all staff recommendations?
Yes, I do.
Are the windows lined up?
I think that's an easy adjustment.
Okay.
It might just be a measurement.
All right. No other questions. Okay, thank you. Open up public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Motion?
Motion to approve 11111 Lillian Street per staff recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Oh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Just a second. And are you voting aye as well?
I did. I voted aye, since Sam retreated. Okay, so 1107 Bosco has been removed. Next is 1226, 1228 Fourth Avenue North. Sean, could you just check on Paul real quick for me? Just, I mean, Sam, real quick for me before we start hearing this one? Oh, and I, I sent Sam out, and he's the one that does the presenting, but, uh, Fourth Avenue, 1226, 1228 Fourth Avenue.
Okay.
Since this last, from last month, I'd like for him to hear it if he's around. While we're reading, is Jenna gone? Is she still here? Jenna's gone, right? I missed her again. Okay. I meant to bring up last month about Jenna. And Ryan Charles, is Ryan here? He left, too. I just waited too long. Okay, we'll try it again in July. All right. Thanks, Sean, and you're on, too.
1224, 1228 Fourth Avenue North. It's a proposal to construct infill on a vacant lot between two one-story buildings. To the left is the Barista Parlor, and to the right is the City House Restaurant. You may remember last month, the commission, you approved, disapproved an application to construct two buildings on the lot, finding the materials, setbacks, and general character of the proposal to be incompatible with the context and not meet the design guidelines. The applicant has made revisions to the plan submitted in May and is again proposing to construct two new buildings on the vacant lot. With the new proposal, the form and scale of the buildings has not really changed. Both buildings will be one-story tall with gabled roofs, peaks at 18 feet tall, eaves at nine feet. As with last month, staff finds these to be compatible with adjacent buildings. The height and massing forms compatible, meet the guidelines. The roof forms, as you see, are a side gable, built, two buildings. The left building is a side gable and the front gable building or roof on the right. Both of these are appropriate, again, as they were last month. However, the elevations here don't show, but the renderings do, that there would be a skylight running along the ridge of the side gable building. Section 3.6.1 of the design guidelines state that skylights should be located behind the midpoint of the building so as to minimize their visibility. Other than that, the roof forms are compatible and meet the guidelines. The setbacks of the new buildings, the building on the left or the top of that image will be 19 feet back, excuse me, from the sidewalk. The building to the right will be 17 feet from the sidewalk or front of the property. Still roughly double the setback at the City House building to the right. These setbacks are just one foot shorter than in the proposal denied last month. Staff finds that they are, these setbacks are not compatible with the context. The one-story building to the left has a zero setback and the nine-foot setback on the building to the right. The guidelines stress the importance of a consistent building edge to avoid interrupting the rhythm and order of the street. Staff finds that this does not meet those guidelines. There's just shading, the proposed footprint. As you can see, the difference is one foot shorter setback for both buildings from last month's proposal to this. On the orientation of the building, there are doors and windows on the front facades, but not clearly identifiable as a prominent front entrance, and there are no walkways that directly engage the right away from the front of the buildings. In fact, both front, both buildings have front yards encircled by patios that effectively disconnect the buildings from the street. They are accessed primarily from the sides via doors off of a central walkway. Staff finds that that's not compatible with commercial buildings. There are some residential clusters with courtyards that have that, that orientation, but it's, it's not typical of this area or of this form or use. And just see, there's the, the front patio areas there, and really no, no direct engagement to the street. The buildings are really accessed from the, the center, the center aisle. One change, or another change here, is that the proposal has the front walkway marked with two stone, large stone bollards out at the edge. This is not a feature really that you would find in front of a commercial building in an urban setting, so find, staff finds that that's something that's just not compatible with the context or the character of Germantown. Moving on, the facade articulation. I'll go back to this. So the, the front building, the fronts of the buildings before were nearly all glass. They have introduced, changed some materials, introduced steel and wood clavoured siding. Those materials are appropriate. The, the rhythm of openings, at least horizontally, is appropriate. But staff finds, and staff finds that the, the balance of solid, solid surface to, to glass or open surface is appropriate. There are some elements that we believe to be missing from a proper storefront configuration. Typically, you think of a storefront as having a bulkhead, a low knee wall bulkhead, a row of storefront windows that are often vertically oriented windows below a transom. And then, you know, these two historic and two non-contributing examples in Germantown that have all of those, those all happen to be two-story buildings, so they have cornices and then other elements going above. But you can certainly see the, the, the primary components of storefronts that, that are exhibited throughout the, the neighborhood. Staff finds that, that these are, don't have the same sort or, or the same compatible rhythms. The, the storefronts don't have bulkheads. The right building has that, they sort of have transom bars, but then to have the, the gable, a, a glass gable, it's not really something common to commercial buildings in the commercial forms around the area. Staff found that, that that part of the design was, was still not compatible. I touched on the materials, steel and wood being compatible. Also, there's a standing seam metal roof. Staff finds that that's appropriate. So there are certainly some changes that, that are more in line with guidelines, materials, the balance of windows and solids. But staff feel, still finds that orientation setbacks, roof set skylights don't meet the guidelines. Summarizing, summing that up, staff recommends disapproval of the infill construction, finding that the proposal does not meet Sections 3.1 General Principles, 3.16 Window Proportions, 3.2 Site Planning, and setbacks 3.23 Orientation, and 3.61 Roofs for the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
So that one slide that you showed, show the difference from the last month's applicant, I mean, application compared to this one, the foot difference?
The setbacks, yes.
And that was the primary difference?
Materials.
And materials?
Materials. The orientation, form of the buildings are the, the same. The form is appropriate, the, the orientation is not. The setbacks just changed one foot.
Sean, when, as far as these two front porches go, the, that are outlined by the hedges, if that were to be a more transparent iron-type fence, would we be more, would staff be more comfortable with something like that?
If it had a, perhaps a six-foot front setback, something more compatible with.
So you don't mind the hedge, you just mind the fact that it's coming up to the, okay?
Yes.
Has the applicant been to see you guys and tried to seek help or on this?
They've been to see us. And they're here, actually, as well, if you have comments or questions for them.
Okay, any more questions for Sean right now? Okay. Thanks, Sean. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
How you doing? My name is Rocco Delio with the Barcelona Wine Bar, and I am the Design Director for the restaurant group. So since our last meeting, we've made significant strides in redesigning this to, I believe, addressing the largest comment, which was facade articulation and the choice of material. Prior to this design, we had expansive glass, floor to ceiling, wall to wall on each building, roughly about 95% glass on those two front facades. We went back, we reevaluated and infilled about 40% of these facades for both buildings with a painted cedar clapboard siding and infilled with, with glass and structural steel to help break up the proportions of these two buildings, to give more of a conforming, contextual facade that reflects the neighborhood. Further, we did reduce the setback from 19, fix, excuse me, from 20 to 19 feet and 18 to 17 feet. In doing so, we again obtained the support of Richard Audit and the Neighborhood Association, as well as our neighbor, Tandy Wilson, chef-owner of City House, both supporting this project in its entirety. I think the big elephant in the room here is the setback. And in reading Section 3.1.1 in the design guidelines, "Buildings should be sited on their respective parcels in ways that are appropriate to their context and to the context it creates." The main word is appropriate, not similar, not mimic, not push it up to the front entry or up, up to the front property line. And in our opinion, it is important to push this setback to what we're proposing. We would like more, but we've literally reduced it by, I would say, 50% from what we originally had, to maintain the visual order of this block. It is important that our building doesn't dwarf the adjacent buildings. The adjacent buildings that have been there since 1957 and the other adjacent building, which has been there since 1897, 120 years of these two buildings standing prominent. And we're being asked to push this building forward to dwarf them, to obstruct them, and to change that visual order. And I think it's important that we maintain that setback to also comply with Section 3.2, which states to encourage. which states to encourage pedestrian activity, to livelier the street edge, and to promote the use of streetfront to provide place for human interaction. What better way to do that than to create a front yard setback with diners, diners of the community? Jumping on to some other points, the orientation of the building or better defined as the placement of our front entry doors and not being directly focused on the street edge. I respectfully disagree with, with this, with this statement, since that is a very clear entrance to our building. As I mentioned in the last presentation, our buildings are not defined by four walls. Rather, there is a blur between these walls. It is important for us that our patios interact equally with the interior space as well as the outside space. So that right there, and I tried to reinforce it with the stone pillars, to reinforce the entrance to our buildings. We also added fixed canopies, which you can see beyond, to help pinpoint the actual entry doors to these two buildings on how people and pedestrians are supposed to access and greet the hostess. But more importantly, that is the entrance, clearly defined and opened seven feet off Fourth Avenue, off Fourth Avenue North. The other is window orientation. This I have a hard time understanding exactly what the issue is here, since directly across the street from us, Three Twelve Pizza Parlor, I believe is the name of the restaurant, has very similar storefront and proportions and massing than what we have here, as well as Butcher House, two and a half blocks down on Fourth Avenue North, which has a very similar vertical, large window, similar to what we're designing here. The last is, I believe the last is, the last is the roof or the skylight. I can't disagree with Sean on this. Yes, it's clearly defined in the guidelines, that it is not supposed to be viewed from the street. And if the board objects to it, we'd be willing to remove it. Although I think it is a pretty cool feature to have some relief in the overall roof design by allowing some light in and out at day and night. So in all, I'm hoping that the board approves this application. We've made significant strides to get to common grounds. We have the support of our neighbors, we have the support of our community, we all want this. That, that is my presentation.
Any questions to the applicant at this point?
Nope.
You're, you're good, Richard?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll call you back if we need you.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Discussion.
Well, you're gonna make me do this again?
You're, you've been on a roll.
Come on, Mr. I, my, my main concerns of everything we've talked about are the, the six-foot setback that they're asking for. I'm sitting here looking at an aerial right now. The building to the right is right on the sidewalk, Tandy Wilson's restaurant, the City House, maybe a couple of feet back, but I, I do think the setback needs to be met. And I understand from a restaurant standpoint why you want that, that front street dining. I get it. But that's not something that we actually have in, in Nashville on very, very few occasions. As far as the entrance goes, if you look at this aerial, Tandy Wilson's entrance is to the side and rear of the City House. You don't walk in the front of that. So, you know, the way they have this set up doesn't bother me at all. I appreciate the fact that they met us with less glazing and some materials. And as far as the skylights go, they can't stay, but that's an easy fix. We could put skylights all over that roof, somehow, just not on the ridge, that's, that's a piece of cake. It's, so I guess what I'm getting at, the major concern is the setback. I think we need to get to the bottom of that.
Can I ask Sean, just to list briefly your, what your disapprovals are based on again? Because they're like numerous, I know setbacks is one of them.
Yeah, general principles and site building, planning setbacks are together, 3.1, 3.2, 3.3. Those are setbacks. Orientation is that buildings should have doors, entrances that are clearly identified and addressed the street. Which, I mean, that's general, but it includes where the doors are located and the, the front patios, that there are no walkways from, you know, the front of a building. Roof in the specific section that it says about, skylights need to be behind the midpoint. Here, I think it means behind the ridge. It's such a long building that just behind the ridge is sufficient to be. Window rhythm and proportion is in the storefronts having, I mean, mainly it's the section of the center portion of the right building that's, that's a gable, glass floor to ceiling. It's just an unusual window proportion to see an eighteen-foot tall window on an eighteen-foot tall commercial building.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Can I comment to that?
Not yet, let's, let everybody else discuss a little bit more.
What does the staff see as a reasonable setback for the front? In line with neighboring, not so much just, I mean, I guess next door, but?
If this were not in a historic zoning overlay, I believe that the codes, well, I, I shouldn't speculate on what I don't really know about. But a lot of times, residential at least, setbacks are required to be the average of adjacent structures or the two adjacent, you know, four on, four to any other sides, the adjacent, average of the adjacents. This is commercial, the guidelines actually say that buildings should be built all the way to the street. Because there is a historic building with a nine-foot setback, I mean, perhaps anything from zero to nine would be appropriate, but that, I mean, that's a, you know, the front patio is, seems to be important to their, their overall concept and design. So I haven't given a specific number. I mentioned six earlier, but that was, you know, just off the top of my head. So anywhere in that range could be appropriate, but it would also need to address the street with orientation and doors.
And the townhouses across the street have a ten-foot setback, is that correct? So it's nine feet for City House and ten feet for the townhouses and zero for Barista Parlor? Does that sound right?
Yeah, I think that's right, ten for the, the townhouses. There's a three-story commercial building that is across the street that has, I think, a six-foot setback. The building is setback six feet, but then there's a fenced patio, like a ship rail patio, that I think is probably right at the, the property line, right at the inside edge of the sidewalk.
Can we talk about the other structure?
Yeah, let me finish this first, I'm sorry. Any more questions for staff in that?
And you might want to open public hearing before bringing the applicant back?
I think we did public hearing. It just went, nobody spoke up. We did, we did public hearing.
Sorry, there, there are people here, so I assumed they wanted to speak.
I will ask commissioners if you're, I'll, I'll open it up again for a quick, one-minute comment from the applicant. If you, just one minute for us, okay?
One minute is all I need. So the commercial section of the setback reads in the design guidelines, generally, commercial buildings within this district are encouraged to build to the property line. Not that it has to be built to the property line. There are many commercial buildings in this overall district that are setback. Secondly, this block itself has random setbacks throughout the entire block from Monroe to Taylor. City House, well, Barista Parlor has zero setback. City House has a ten-foot setback. Adjacent or on either side of City House, there are empty lots, so there's zero sep, I mean, excuse me, there are a hundred and ninety-foot setbacks. Adjacent to that, there are buildings that are very random between ten to zero setbacks. On the opposite corner, there are three contributing homes that are setback about fifteen feet to the face of the building. And then we have the townhouses across the street from us, from ten, that are setback roughly around ten feet.
Okay.
So there are no definitive setbacks.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I will add to that, just to remind you of how you've made these determinations in the past. You've looked at the historic buildings on either side and, and not gone further afield than that block face to determine the appropriate setbacks.
Thanks, Robin.
And is that because we do that with the rhythm and spacing to be consistent?
Well, I'll, I'll jump in here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Safe, Sam. My feeling is a setback should be to match the City House. That the, I'm okay with the orientation of the door. The skylights needs to be moved. The center portion of the right building needs modification to be more appropriate, the window rhythm and proportions.
It sounded like a motion.
If, if that is a motion, could I ask for how the orientation meets the guidelines? Just to, to make sure we have that on the record.
The the sidewalk in between the structures clearly designates the front entrance of the building. Leading into the building. My mind.
So leading into courtyard with that?
Yep. Yeah, we, we've been talking about so many setback numbers. What is this, somebody help me out here, what's the setback that they're asking for, for these two front porches?
Nineteen.
Seventeen and nineteen.
Can I also note that our neighbor?
We can't keep doing it, I apologize.
It's not like it's some resistance on that orientation, is it?
Zero, do you have something? I'm sorry, unless you mean, I knew somebody from over here was saying.
You know, I, I guess maybe the orientation is a little quirky because one faces the front and the other faces the side. But it, it's a unique situation and granted, Germantown has its uniqueness and we all know that. Excuse me. But I know that some of the things that I clearly heard from Sean about some of the items that have been disapproved doesn't seem to be too far off that the developer couldn't, or Barteko or the applicant could work with. So I, I don't, I'm not so, you know, sure that that can't be worked out, but, you know.
Sure.
This has been a really difficult, difficult project for me. I've driven by a couple of times, I've looked at plans and, and gone back and forth. You know, it, it's obviously something that has made a lot of progress since the last meeting. I liked the first design, you know, but it didn't, clearly didn't meet the guidelines and a number of respects. And, and we appreciate what the developer's done to, to try to bring it more into conformance of the guidelines. I, I do think that, that, that it's appropriate, as Richard said, to match the setback of the City House. I think that creates a, that, that doesn't disrupt the rhythm along the street. As far as the orientation, I think the uniqueness of this is that the materials and the colors and the treatment of the front of these two, two separate buildings are so similar that in, in my mind, there's no question where the front entrance is. It's not incompatible with the next-door neighborhood City House, where you really do have trouble figuring out how to get into that structure. Now, that shouldn't, you know, weigh into the, the new building, but, but it is part of the richness of this neighborhood and this character. I, I think having the overhangs, the, the awnings that come out over the front doors that help to further identify that and with lighting, that, that it can be accomplished to make it clear that where the front entrance is to it.
Thanks, Zero. Anything, anything, Sam?
No, I prefer.
Okay, I think we could actually turn yours into a motion if you want to try it again.
Okay.
Someone?
You talking to me or Richard?
I was looking at Richard, I'm sorry. Maybe I was looking at you and thinking of Richard.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve. Where are we? One, two, two, six, one, two, two, eight, Fourth Avenue North. With the following modifications. Setback, front setback to match the neighbor of the City House. The skylights on the roof ridge be relocated off the roof ridge and comply with regulations, so that they are not supposed to be seen from the street. I think that's what it is. And that the center glass section of the right building be modified, that the applicant work with staff to make that more consistent with the rhythm and proportion of, of the historic area.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Can we add to that also, and clearly that they work with staff on materials and roofing?
Yeah.
Windows with selections, brick, wood, et cetera.
Since we have a second, you could add that, just with all materials that be approved.
So all, and add to that that all materials be approved by staff?
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, a motion and a second, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Fourteen thirty, Inglewood Circle.
Fourteen thirty, Inglewood Circle North is an application for infill construction. MHCC staff issued a permit to demolish the non-contributing house on the site in March 2016. The proposed single-family infill will meet all base zoning requirements. The application calls for a double-width driveway that is twenty feet wide. The site plan shows a driveway stopping just beyond the line of the house's porch. This property does not have an alley, so a driveway from the street is appropriate. However, staff recommends that a driveway be a single-lane driveway that extends all the way to the rear of the house for parking, as is common in the immediate historic context. Here is an aerial view where you could see most of the houses in the immediate vicinity have a single-lane driveway that goes to the rear of the properties. Here is the front facade. The house will be one and a half stories with a height of approximately twenty-eight feet. Staff finds that the infill's height, scale, materials, roof form, fenestration pattern, and orientation all meet the design guidelines. Here are the side and rear facades. And here are some context photos. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions. The finished floor height of the infill be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic structures. The driveway be a single-width driveway that extends to the rear for parking. Staff approve the final windows, shingle color, metal roof color, and masonry. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets section three of the Inglewood Place Conservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines.
Okay, thank you, any questions for? Any questions for Melissa? Okay, thank you. The applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Yes, John Warren. I've got one question, we're fine with all that. If you go back to the site plan slide on the driveway, would it be possible to have the single-width driveway, then once it passes the front plane of the house widen? You know, then you could park two cars side by side towards the rear?
Yes, staff would be happy with that.
Okay.
Okay, so you agree with staff recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions to the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing an unclosed public hearing, motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So, we have some SPs?
We have two final SPs, so for, in both cases, we have coming cases, you've already reviewed and approved the preliminary SPs. So, 1207 Avenue North is an application for a final SP review to construct a mixed-use development on what are currently seven parcels along Sixth and Seventh Avenues North and Madison Street, and those are shaded here in blue. And again, this is the Germantown Historic Preservation Overlay. The lots are all currently vacant. In May 2015, the commission approved the bulk height, massing, roof form, and site layout for the project as part of the preliminary SP review. The SP was approved by the council in August 2015, and the applicant is now seeking final approval of the materials, design details, appurtenances, and landscape features. The development is connected to the alterations and additions to the Elliott School site across the street, shown here in blue, which the Elliott School will be converted to apartments. The commission approved the plans for the additions and renovations to the Elliott School as part of the consent agenda earlier today. Here is a more detailed site plan. The entry to the commercial section of the development will be at the corner of Sixth Avenue North and Madison Street, addressing both streets, which is appropriate. There are several private entries to the residential units along Sixth Avenue North, Madison Street, and Seventh Avenue North. These entries will be located behind stoops, which is appropriate. The development will retain the brick sidewalks on Sixth and Seventh Avenues North. It will use an existing curb cut on Madison Street to access the underground parking. Here are facade drawings, and I'll just go through these relatively quickly. These are Madison Street and Sixth Avenue North, and courtyard elevations and alley elevations, Madison Street and Seventh Avenue North, and more courtyard and townhouse and alley elevations. I'll just leave it here for this. The no materials, I'm sorry, let me go back. The fenestration pattern for the proposed development ensures that there is an appropriate proportion of solid to void in the design. The development's facades on Sixth Avenue North, Seventh Avenue North, and Madison Street have window patterns that address the street and do not result in large expanses of walls without a window or door opening. The no materials are appropriate for multifamily infill in Germantown. The primary cladding material will be brick, with metal wall assembly used as an accent material. The windows will be aluminum. Lime stone or cast stone terraces and planters with metal cable rail will be installed. Decorative concrete will be used for architectural accents, and the window sills will be concrete. The balconies will be painted steel with meshed panel rails. Staff recommends approval of all final material choices prior to purchase and installation. And here are some context photos. These are photos of, I think the top one is Seventh Avenue North, the bottom one Seventh Avenue North, and the one on the bottom right is Sixth Avenue North. The top picture there is the Elliott School, which is going to be renovated and converted to apartments, and across the street is the, I believe it's the Vista Complex. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the condition that staff approve the brick and stone, metal cladding color and texture, windows and doors, the fence design, and that we approve the, that the mechanical systems be on the roof or in the interior of the development, that we receive more information regarding the boardwalk that was called out for Seventh Avenue North, and staff approve all exterior lighting. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed project meets the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines.
Okay, you have questions for Richard?
Can I ask probably a silly question?
Mm-hmm.
On the prior elevations, the glass was blue? Is that just, it's not going to be like blue, no?
I would, the architect could probably clarify that. It's my understanding that it's clear glass, but the architect should clarify that, so I interpreted that as clear glass.
All right. If any more questions, thank you, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Manuel Zaitlin, architect, 516 Hagen Street, and we agree with the staff's recommendations.
Any questions for...
We are doing a building for Rocky Law that's going to have some blue glass. This one does.
Not this one, okay.
Manuel, did I hear that there's underground parking?
Yes, there's, I can't remember how many spaces, but basically, one space per bedroom for the entire development. It's under the east building of the buildings, but it'll provide parking for all three sides, including the Elliott School.
I mean, it's, because there's so many, you know, construction that has all these huge garages, so this, that's a great development plan. Thank you.
And just, you know, one thing if you remember from the previous, from the preliminary SP, we were stepped down from three stories to two stories as we approached the residential buildings on both sides, on both streets, and I don't know if you noticed, but the, I think the passage you referred to is, we actually were able to separate on Seventh Avenue, we separated the townhouses from the mass of the building to help break down that massing even more.
Okay, thanks. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing? Motion?
A move of approval with staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. And now, we have 1023 Petway Avenue.
1023 Petway is also a final SP review. The lot was previously zoned as a single-family, but the SP zoning enacted in May 2016 now allows for duplex on the lot. The commission approved the overall site plan enassing of the duplex at the February 2016 public hearing. At that time, MHCC found that the project's height, scale, setback, rhythm of spacing, roof form, and orientation met the design guidelines. This application and review is for the project's final design details, including materials, proportion and rhythm of openings, and appurtenances. Here is the front facade. The no materials have all been approved by the commission in the past, and include split-faced concrete blocks, smooth-faced cement fiberboard siding, an asphalt single primary roof, and a metal roof as a porch accent. Here are the side and rear facades. The dormers on the side facades contain horizontal window openings which do not adequately fill the dormer, as was typically, as was typical historically, and as the commission has required in the past. Staff recommends that the side dormer windows be either vertically oriented or square, so they better fill the dormer space and meet the historic proportion of window openings. And here are some context photos. So, in summary, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: that staff approve all final material choices, that the side dormer windows be either vertically oriented or square, so they better fill the dormer area, and that walkways be added from the sidewalk to the front porch. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed infill meets the design guidelines for the Greenwood Historic, Greenwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, and the applicant is here.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Melissa? Okay, would the applicant like to, I'm assuming it's you, I'm looking right at you. So, you agree with staff recommendation, okay. So, just make a note that the applicant has said he agrees with staff recommendations.
I agree with his name and address.
Yeah, might as well do your name and address.
My name's Harold Johnson, my address is 806 Halcyon Avenue, Unit A, and I agree with staff recommendations.
Awesome, okay, thank you. Okay, open public hearing, closed public hearing? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, 1023 Petway Avenue, per staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Just a couple of notes for the commission, we will be meeting at a different location next month at the Midtown Precinct. Everybody knows where that is? If we're not going to find out where it is, it's actually on the address here, 1443 12th Avenue. Also, by the way, I think the maps were a really cool thing, by the way, staff, that was really helpful that you guys did, the little digital maps, so as me, Bravo for that.
What about...
Is the location going to be a permanent thing?
I'm sorry?
If you'd like for it to be, yeah, it's easy for us to do. And what did you think about the revised format for the infill staff recommendations? Was that worthwhile?
Yes.
Yeah.
The hive mail, it's, that was good.
Yeah, that was good. The more information about it, that was good.
Okay.
I mean, meeting locations, is that a one-time thing, or are we going to switch for good?
That is a two-time thing. It'll be for July and for another meeting coming up this year, I can't remember, was October, November, November? But it'll, it'll be on your agenda as well, and it's just north of the intersection of Wedgewood and 12th.
And just to be clear, are you saying that if we like it better, it could be our permanent meeting place, or...
No, no, we just can't be in here.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
You get that later or something?
Yeah.
Okay. If, any other business? Okay.
I'm sorry, did you, apologize, I was typing. Did you remind everyone that we'll also be voting on chair and vice chair next month?
I did not, I did not. Next month, we, I've hit the gavel, but next month we'll be hitting on, I mean, we'll be voting on chair and vice chair again.
I recuse myself.
Meeting adjourned.
Please, I'm out.